You're muted, Tom. Still muted.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yep.
You ready to go?
I'm not seeing, is Brian on? I'm not seeing him.
I'm here. Hey, Tom, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Alright, I pinned, but I'm still not seeing everybody.
Can you hear me better now?
That's very good.
Yeah, okay. Denise, do you want to try going to show participants? It's got two circles above two almost squares, far right of.
Yeah, I've got it, I've got it, I've got the pin on for production assistant. And I, right now, I'm on show participants, but I, I'm not seeing, I don't see Brian anywhere. Yeah.
Because he's starting to look like a homeless guy with a beard.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know why, but I'm not seeing him.
Can you hear, can you hear him?
I think so, I heard him when he spoke a moment ago.
I think we'll go ahead then, if you, if you can hear him, you know, I think.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. So I think we'll get started. First, I need to read a statement that I, at the beginning of every meeting. As Chair of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020 hyphen oh four, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are, A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Microsoft Teams for this electronic meeting. All members of the school board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number: one hyphen six oh three hyphen seven six six hyphen five six four six, and ID code four six one three six two hashtag, or by clicking on the following website: http colon slash slash www dot o r c s d dot o r g slash s t r e a m. B, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using the Microsoft Team or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the O R C S D Board Agenda for July 8th. Providing, C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call six oh three two eight zero four two zero two, or email at o r c s d hyphen v i d e o at o r c s d dot o r g. T, adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during the meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call of attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the Right to Know law. So I'll read the, go through the roll. Denise Day?
Here, and no one is with me now, but my husband may go through the room at some point.
Okay, Al Holland?
Here, and no one's in the room with me.
Dan Klein?
Here and alone.
Francis Narrows?
Uh, here and nobody with me.
Kenny Rotner?
Here and I'm alone.
Michael Williams?
I am present and alone.
And Tom Newkirk, I'm here and alone. So moving to the agenda, first the.
Before we start, I'm wondering, should Chris Regan kind of mute his video? Because it's almost like he's sitting at the table with us at our meeting, and I know he'll be speaking later, but I'm wondering. If, yeah, we're fine.
Great, great, thank you. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. I, I have no changes, so could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Denise, is there a second?
Well, second.
Second by Brian. Roll call, Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Holland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Francis Narrows?
Yes.
Kenny Rotner?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk? Yes, the agenda is approved. So Dr. Morse, you have some public comments?
I do, and I have about a half dozen guys, so it'll be a bet. Um, the first one is from Jeff Pillay Shore from Durham. Um, he intended for me to read this on June 24th, and it got by me. And so first, he wanted to thank you all for the hard work in guiding our district through these unprecedented crises of the past several months. As a parent of three children in the district, I have seen the struggles and successes firsthand, and have never been prouder to be part of the Oyster River School District. Kudos to you and every member of the district. And now we face another tremendous challenge. The past several weeks of demonstrations have reopened my eyes to the challenges of a racist, of racial injustice in our country. As a relatively privileged school district and one of the whitest states, we have a special responsibility to provide our students with an education that reflects the diversity of experience in America as a whole. I ask the school district to provide a comprehensive overview of where we stand. Have we done a social justice equity audit of our schools? What resources do we use to ensure our curriculum, beginning in the elementary school, is balanced with diverse histories and stories? Does the district have a plan for providing anti-racism education across all grades, beginning in the elementary? Oyster River has always prided itself on leading the way in tolerance and progressive values, and I am hopeful to see us continue setting the standard in New England. Jeff also wrote a specific public comment for this evening. Please elevate this topic in the community as school starts. In light of recent events, it is important for the community to understand the priority you put on this work and to shine a light on what's already being done. I also think that much of what you've shared can be put into a more user-friendly, inviting form. Even with your directions, it wasn't easy to find this information. Fellow parents need to understand the priority you put on this. With all due respect, it deserves to be more prominent and proudly stated. Provide updates to hold the district accountable for the roadmap map you've established. Obviously, with the disruption caused by COVID-19, it's understandable that some goals must be delayed. So do you know the new target dates? Where, where equity and inclusion competencies are articulated at each grade level? By June of two thousand twenty, question mark? Was a strategy to attract and hire and retain applicants articulated by June 2020? Also specifically, was an inclusion competency committee established? I don't see it on the website. Finally, while I admire the racism policy, and even though it's only two years old, it is now clearly not what the moment requires. As the Smithsonian Museum says, "To create an equal society, we must commit to making unbiased choices and being anti-racist in all aspects of our lives." I am happy to submit as public comment, but I'd like the Board to revisit the racism policy, to revise it, sharpen it, and make it an anti-racism policy. Brenda Warden wrote this evening that I am requesting that the Board please elaborate on the representation of those joining the newly formed Anti-Racism Committee. Could the Board or Superintendent also elaborate on the selection criteria and how staff and the community are chosen? I searched the minutes, watched the school board meeting, and read the backups for this meeting, and still cannot find details surrounding this. I read the memo that the Superintendent has been inviting community members and is waiting to, for some to confirm. I write concern that those of us who have students of color in the district should, at the very least, be invited to participate in each and every matter surrounding topics such as this. As I mentioned in my public comments back in 2017, we represent only 1% of the district. Given the considerably low numbers, this does not represent many families. If the intention of the district and the committee is to regress and grow, involving all key stakeholders should be a priority. We should be the first families the district reaches out to. Once invited, we should have the option to decline, but it would show us that the district values our voice and perspective. Thank you for your understanding, sensitivity, and consideration of including those of us that it directly affects. This is important work, thank you. Amy Pierce of Durham. If Durham chooses to have school remote this coming school year, but there are schools that choose to have buildings open, will O R C S D provide the ability for students to attend an alternative school? Remote learning is not a pathway to success on any level in any way for my family, and I would like to make sure my children are in school. Hopefully, here in O R C S D. Rebecca Throop is Vice President of Seacoast Mental Health Center. As a mental health center executive, I implore you to physically reopen the O R C S D schools this fall. Data from the Harvard School of Public Health and the American Association of Pediatrics and others are clear. Children need to be in school for their well-being. My agency's Vice President of Children and Family Services was on the statewide committee assessing this issue. As a result, I've seen some of the data, and it concretely supports our kids returning to our buildings. As a parent, my son's long-term educational success is contingent on this reentry. He definitely educationally regressed this spring. Our teachers did incredible things during this emergency, but it cannot replicate real schooling, especially at the high school level. I am intricately involved in my agency's shift from telehealth back to in-person care. I 100% understand the complexities. Our situation in O R C S Ds is similar. Community-facing and complicated. Our reentry for staff, all ages, health needs, clients, primarily higher-risk individuals, community, three locations, field hospital, school physician, and co-locations, it's hard. We're doing all the screening, modifications, and investments that schools need. We're finding reentry isn't one size fits all, similar to how elementary, middle school, and high school have, may have different models. However, to achieve our mission, we need to get back into our buildings. Mission has to remain paramount over what perhaps subsets of our staff or constituents want. Otherwise, we fail. O R C S D also has a mission and vision. Those words can't be achieved unless kids go back. It is critical that kids physically resume real educational routine and access to services. Supporting families also involves supporting their employment. O R C S D is committed to a remote year without a stated stay-at-home order will negatively impact the job situation for a vast majority of families. I think all parents can agree that this spring proved that remote learning demands full-time parent involvement. The necessary O R C S D required operational changes are hard, but entirely doable and mission required. These aren't unique from other organizations already doing this. The state has opened, U N H is opening, youth sports are occurring on our high school and community fields right now. Indoor operations have opened. I ask O R C S D to not make a decision regarding my child's education based on subsets of fear or due to complexity. That fails our kids educationally, socially, mentally, and physically. We can do the hard things. Allison Jumper wrote this evening. As a parent of three O R C S D children, I urge you to make an in-person return to school this fall your number-one priority. Please read thoroughly, listen to, and consider closely the National Recommendations of the Pediatricians, American Academy of Pediatrics, Considerations: Guidance for School Reentry, which clearly indicate that our children need to be, have in-person education. Our children are depending on you and need to go back to school. The children of this generation, whose educations are being impacted by this pandemic, are at risk of their life trajectories being permanently negatively impacted. Remote learning is inequitable education for all. Remote learning puts equal access to education at risk. All children need to have equal access to education. This is an essential principle, a civil right. This pandemic should not be a cause for some children to benefit from education while other children have access to little or to nothing. Anytime away from school and associated interruptions of supported services often results in social isolation, making it difficult for schools to identify and address important learning deficits, as well as child and adolescent physical or sexual abuse, substance use, depression, and suicidal ideation. It is imperative to give all children access to in-person school this fall as the risks to their well-being while away from school are dire. Please prioritize our teachers during this return to in-person education for our children. Teachers have cause for substantial concern for their health and need to feel that their safety is taken very seriously. This means that every effort will be made to appropriately mitigate risk for them in the school setting. They will need P P E that is proven to mitigate this, this risk and also allow them to work with children effectively. They will need safety protocols put in place that are evidence-based and allow them to return to the classroom without fear. Lastly, please maintain great flexibility in planning for all different age levels of the children of the O R C S D. The mitigation needs of each level will undoubtedly be different, and the mitigation strategies to reduce risk of COVID-19 will require our district to be innovative and courageous. Please make your decisions regarding risk mitigation based on the most up-to-date research and evidence that is specific to COVID-19 and children, so as to allow for all children to be in school and for teachers to feel that the risks to their health are being optimally mitigated. And the final public comment tonight is from Colin Jumper, M.D., from Durham. As a parent of three young children in Oyster River District, I feel strongly that it is critical for the students to resume in-person education at school. We have struggled through an entire quarter now of remote learning, and with young children in particular, I do not think anyone can seriously argue that remote instruction is comparable to the quality of the educational experience in person and school. This entire cohort of children runs the worst risk of being educationally blighted by this experience as they start the upcoming school year where they should have been, had this pandemic not occurred. To continue to try to educate them remotely is to accept they will continue to fail, fall further behind. They deserve every effort, not only to resume in-person, high-quality instruction, but to work to recover the ground that has been lost. This cannot occur with remote learning at the elementary age. And that is the end of public comment, Tom.
Thank you. Move to the approval of the minutes from the June 17th regular, regular meeting minutes. Could I have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Denise, is there a second?
Well, second.
Second by Brian, are there changes that?
I have one.
Okay.
On page seven, when Kenny makes the motion, I believe it should read expenditure from the budget, not expenditure from the fund balance.
Is that your understanding, Kenny?
Um, so Denise, it's worded that it comes from the budget now, or it comes from the fund balance now?
It, it's worded that it comes from the 2020, 2021 fund balance. It was my understanding that that expenditure was going to come from the 2020, 2021 budget.
I'm sorry, I don't remember.
That's correct.
What Denise is saying is right, Al?
Yeah.
Good, I'll accept that for sure then.
Yeah, I think, I think Denise is right on that.
Okay.
Uh, other, other changes? Hearing none, Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Holland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Francis Narrows?
Yes.
Kenny Rotner?
Yes, and thanks Denise for catching that.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes, so seven zero, the minutes are approved. So move to announcements, commendations, and comments. Does anyone have any of those?
I do.
Denise?
Um, so I couldn't remember, so I actually looked it up, and we spent $25,000 to improve the front entrance of the high school. That, that was for the renovation to the front entrance. And we voted against spending $2,600 to secure the back entrance, and that just doesn't make sense to me. So I am hopeful that if we find additional savings in some of the other projects that are going to be occurring, that perhaps at some point we could revisit being able to secure that back door.
Yeah, thank you. Kenny? Kenny?
You're muted, Kenny.
You're muted.
Here we go, I, I just had a question for Dr. Morse. People in my neighborhood are asking how long this current phase of the middle school project with the heavy equipment and noise is going to be on for. So we, we kind of know what to prepare for.
Sure, thanks Kenny, we'll be done, they'll be done with the earthwork by the middle of August, and it shifts over to steelwork.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I wanted to announce that I've arranged for another walkthrough of the site. If any of you folks are interested, just let me know, it'll be on July 23rd at 1:30. Um, so just let me know, I would also like, maybe give first priority to board members who haven't seen it, but then also reach out if there are other slots available to members of the select, select boards and town councils, see if any of them would like to, to walk through. Um, some of us did it last time, and it really, I think it's really illuminating to see firsthand some of the, some of the work that's been done, these, you know, really retaining walls and, you know, the geothermal wells. It's, it's really different to see it in firsthand than it is just on paper. So if you could let me know within the next week if you're interested, and then if, if it's, then I can also throw out the invitation to the various town councils and select boards. So let that, it'll be July 23rd at 1:30.
Tom, do you want me to do that for you in terms of reaching out to the towns?
Sure, just let me know the numbers, and I think, and I think if it, if it turns out like, it seems to be like a dozen might be a good number for, for one walkthrough, and if we have more than that, I think Andre would do it a second time, so.
For sure.
Okay. Other announcements? Okay, so moving to the Superintendent's report?
Thank you, so in terms of really good news between when your package went out and this evening, the New Hampshire Intellasket Academic Association has awarded our high school for the second year in a row the Sportsmanship Award, which really, to me, is one of the highest honors you can receive in interscholastic athletics. This is something that the coaches and the, from the various schools, along with leadership and H I A A, rank each school for their behavior on the athletic field. So I just wanted to make sure the Board knew that. It's really a stunning accomplishment for, of our students. Um, I also wanted to just give the Board a quick update in relation to the Anti-Racism Committee. You know, the, the issue is sometimes summertime and getting people to return, but we have had really great response. I had two more people respond today. Um, going back to Brenda's comment about, you know, how I chose, the, there were people who worked on the original committee three and a half years ago that I reached out to, and people who were leaders in the petition that were received. And, you know, also, you know, without vote a little bit later on the nominees from, from the school board. And finally, New Hampshire Listens is going to help us organize these meetings and focus them so that we can accomplish some significant issues since we're going to bring this committee front, forward. Um, so that's basically how I, I reached out. Some of the people have been involved in this effort for many, many years, long before the district became involved in it. And, and so that, that committee is forming pretty well.
Okay, moving to the Finance Committee, Al?
Oops, let me get, messed around with my, I'm muted. So the Finance Committee met, and I can't remember what the date was of it, I'm losing track, now it's summer. The first thing we went through was the, the C I P. We really kind of concentrated on next year's C I P, what the items are. And the big one that really stuck out was $300,000 for Mohamad, it was to finish the project. Remember, we redid the entryway, which kind of secured the entryway of one of the school, but the old office, the nurse's office, and I can't remember what the other room was, haven't been fixed, and so that really, Jim, and both Jim Rozicky and Superintendent said that really is kind of their priority to work on. And so the discussion was, what could, is there stuff that we could do in-house rather than contracting it out to bring the price down? And Jim Rozicky felt there could be, so that, that really is the, the priority for the next C I P. Uh, if it came to cost, we cut other things and retain that. Uh, the next thing we talked about really was, you know, when we talk about the budget, the majority of the budget, I think it's upwards of about 80%, is personnel. And so you can't just cut our facilities budget and, and hope to balance, have a balanced approach to fiscal, this reasonable fiscal approach. And so what Jim brought up is that he's really beginning to ask if there's a position that, there's a retirement that doesn't need to be replaced, that we don't replace it. And so they're really carefully looking at that. The idea really is to have more of a balanced approach, as I said, so that, that came up. In your packet, you'll also notice, because it came up in the meeting, the Siemens report, and the question really was, uh, did we achieve savings after we did all the Siemens thing? And I had forgotten when I looked at the report that Siemens had actually guaranteed that we'd get a savings amount, but we actually exceeded the savings, so, so that's good news. Uh, finally, we're meeting the 29th of this month. Uh, Jim and I need to put together a agenda. The hope is that we can actually get some of the townspeople to come and discuss ways that we can collaborate going forward, and I think that's short and sweet.
Okay, questions for Al? Denise? Denise?
There we go, yeah, I had to unmute myself. First of all, I very much appreciated having the backup. Um, it was so helpful to be able to understand, you know, not just having the minutes, but where that, you know, the basis for that discussion. Um, so very much appreciate it and hope that we'll continue to receive the backup. Um, I did have one question when there was a discussion about, Jim Rozicky explained there is an opportunity for energy savings and asked the committee if they would allow him to take on the small projects that could come off the plan. And I didn't really know what those projects were that were being referred to.
That is a good question, I can't, I honestly can't remember what the energy savings projects were. I'll have to get, I'll have to ask Jim about that.
Okay.
And as, as for like the backup and the minutes, we did have a discussion about the idea is to make sure that, that not only do you get both of them, but you get it in the packet before you come to the meeting so that you're totally informed if you have any questions you're going to ask us.
Thank you.
Just, just keep in mind too that it's a really, when, because we're meeting opposite weeks of this meeting, that it is a very quick turnaround for Wendy, so, you know, keep that in mind if it comes a little bit late. That's, I mean, if it comes on a Tuesday rather than a Friday, you know, please keep that in mind because we are asking a lot of her, as well as doing the Board minutes. She's doing our minutes and then turning them around for you guys on a really, really quick turnaround, since we meet on Wednesdays, so just keep that in mind.
Um, so I guess, and I totally understand that and very much appreciate it. So I guess, and I totally understand that and very much appreciate it. So I don't know how difficult it would be to just continue to send the back out back out to all of us when she sends them sends that back out to the finance committee members. That way, if she is pressed for time for the minutes, we at least have enough time to really digest the backup information. So perhaps, you know, if it's not too much work, we could we could try it that way.
That should be easy, Denise. That's a really good suggestion because the work is already been compiled. And that can go she can just instead of just sending it to finance committee, just send the entire board.
Thank you.
I have a question, like, where do you see the finance committee going? You've gathered a lot of information. Do you see yourself creating like possible scenarios? Like, this would be one scenario where we might have a budget increase of X. This might be a scenario where we might have a budget increase of Y. I'm just I'm kind of seeing where you're where you see yourself moving towards, say, into September.
I think that's a really good, you know, way to approach it. I think right now, we've just been digging through the personnel and the CIP stuff and really trying to prioritize what we what's the most important things to come forward. And so I think once we have that, we can begin exactly what you're saying, Tom. What what is this scenario? What does this look like? What does Plan B look like? What does Plan C look like? And that that should help to inform, I think, what would be a real budget goal.
Yeah. And maybe following up that, I know I don't want to this might be being persistent, but there was I don't I think last year, when the budget goal was set, we didn't realize the implications of exactly what we were doing because it ended up, there was like a 3.5% increase if you calculated it one way, and a 2.8% increase if you calculated it the other way. And my understanding is that the reason for the higher number was basically had to do with fund balances, that the fund balance one year was bigger than the fund balance the other year. So you had to make up a certain amount. And that's why the 3.5 was higher than the 2.8. So I think there's and I think fund balances are so variable, whether we want to go back to like being more the budget increase that the our budget increases is going to be a certain amount. So I think, no, I'm not saying it should be that way. But it seems to me that's a question we have to answer because I think we got we got hung up on that last year.
Well, again, I think that goes into us like this prioritizing because, you know, the same thing could be said about the CIP. It's a little squishy. In the end, we were pulling stuff out of the CIP. And so what we've done right now is what is the most important project that you really want to have? And would you be willing to sacrifice other things? And I think the same is being said with the retirement incentive, that when we look at personnel, what do we really have to have? And what could we live without? And so that allows us to if we do that beforehand, that allows us to kind of streamline it down to the most essential things going to the budget. And I think that gives us a better hope of coming up. Because in the past, we always tried to come up what we have to have to come up with this budget goal. And I think if we prioritize personnel and CIP, the fund balance is another one. I assume we'll have a set number that we want for the fund balance. That should give us the basis for a realistic budget goal.
Good. Okay.
Also, Tom, we're trying to work through is kind of go through with a fine tooth comb now. So when it gets to the board, it's just a little less little less yet to go through.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
To get there. So we have we have it kind of set up, and we'll make recommendations. But whether you take those recommendations completely up to you. But, you know, what we'd like to do is at least have the legwork all done so we don't tie ourselves up in board meetings going spending hours going over this when we will spend the hours on a kind of behind the scenes, you know, obviously, an open forum, but behind the scenes, in the sense that we're a different committee or subcommittee. That way, when it gets to you, it's a little less easier to digest.
Yeah, I guess I guess, you know, I think that's great. My question was more of a technical point. It's like, how how you define the goal? Just we need to be more aware if you define it one way, if you define it another way, it's going to create a difference for us. And I think last year, not just to repeat myself, last year, I don't think we realized that we were creating that problem when we adopted the goal. So we should just be going to with our eyes open that if we if we do it last year, fund balances, end of year fund balances could have a could have an effect upon the the goal, the, you know, the way we calculate the budget. That's all that's kind of all I was saying. Other questions on the finance committee? Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Al. So we move forward to Kendall Gray, the sustainability report.
Kendall has been trying to give this report to the board for many months. And, you know, going into our crisis mode has really interrupted his opportunity to do this. So we wanted to make sure he got to do this. So Kendall, I know you're on. So we'll turn it over to you.
It's a she.
Hi.
Sorry.
I'm going to I'm the sustainability coordinator for the district, and I'm going to do a little bit of background before I turn it over to Kendall.
Okay.
So plastics, particularly single use plastics, such as water bottles, have been a discussion point within the board, as well as the Sustainability Advisory Committee. Last fall, we decided that in order to work on this question, we needed to get some data on the amount of single use plastic that is generated throughout the district by conducting an audit. In early November, high school students attending a climate retreat recommended that the audit be expanded to include all waste. And beyond knowing raw numbers, we wanted to understand behaviors and attitudes towards waste. Over the course of January and February, I worked alongside high school students, our UNH intern Kendall Gray, custodial staff, middle school and high school teachers and principals on a comprehensive district-wide audit plan. Although COVID threw a wrench in our plans, tonight Kendall will share her results of the survey and audit. It gives us a good and solid blueprint for the future. Kendall?
Hi, everyone. So thanks for having me on. I know it's been a crazy couple months. But just about a week ago, I finished putting together the report that sums up the audit and surveys we conducted. So the surveys went out to middle school, high school students, as well as district faculty and staff. And then we conducted the audit at the high school. So this is a very kind of broad level overview of what that report says. And we'll have that posted so you all can dig in deeper to see, you know, more of the data there. But just some of the results that I wanted to touch on tonight. Composting was a big theme throughout the report throughout the report, just showing that the survey and the audit suggests that composting bins are not conveniently located throughout. You can oh, awesome, can skip on over to the next slide there. The relatively flat bars here on the right, show that the composting bins are not conveniently located as perceived by faculty and students. And you can move on to the next slide there. I will skip over that one for later. But there's a high level of contamination between bins. The recycling and landfill bins rather than having them in composting bins, suggesting that there needs to be a lot of more composting bins throughout classroom settings. This is where most of the faculty, about 73% of faculty, reported eating in classrooms. So that's kind of the low hanging fruit that the district can undertake is instituting composting bins throughout the school. They'll reduce the amount of waste that goes to landfills. And then on top of this, it's just the need for more encouragement by peers and mentors within the district that suggests that middle school and high school students do not feel supported by their friends to sort their waste. And more high school students rather than middle school students feel that faculty and staff do not encourage them very frequently to sort their wastes, too. So there's definitely a need for a culture shift within the district towards kind of a proactivity towards sustainability. So yeah, so the report is kind of sums up some of those recommendations that I have for the district, largely surrounding composting and then education, including the parents as well. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Kendall?
I just had a comment because the first thing that caught my attention actually was exactly what you said when you did the location of the disposal bins. It shows that, I mean, the district has done a great job with encouraging recycling, but the paradigm has shifted. And it's like, there's actually a negative financial incentive to recycle currently, whereas composting is our best hope. There is, if we are able to generate enough compost and do it collectively, and maybe work with, there's a company up in Maine that's doing it, that we could actually have our composting removed for free or generate some revenue. Since that's about 20% of our solid waste, it's our best avenue to control costs. So it really is something that we're going to have to we did a great job with the recycling, but we really need to shift over now to composting.
Yeah, especially right now, when the recycling industry is is very, it's, you know, fluid changes by the month and policies change. Composting is definitely more of a streamlined system. And there's plenty of studies out there showing public systems, as well as other businesses and institutions, saving economically and in terms of greenhouse gas emissions, when more fully instituting composting within their campuses.
Tom, I had something.
I'm sorry, Kenny, go ahead. Yeah.
Thank you very much for the report and the information. I agree completely with Al said, and I think it really shows an opportunity if we're able to consolidate with surrounding communities, and there's no reason why surrounding schools, we can get a critical mass together, which has been a barrier to the compost. What struck me the most, however, was how much students did not feel that peers were positive influence in getting kids to recycle. And to me, that defines that we're somehow missing the mark. Because I think unless we have that peer to peer interaction and a good kind of peer pressure, it's going to be hard to get where we want to go. And so I think a critical thing to for us to address is how is the message we're trying to present not coming through where this is really something very desirable that we wish students would reflect upon. So but thank you for that. Great work.
Definitely. You can have the infrastructure there. But if people, you know, aren't taking advantage of it, or so encouraging one another to use the infrastructure there, then, you know, it's not going to result in what we want it to result in, for sure.
Exactly.
Other questions for Kendall?
Thank you, Kendall.
Thank you. Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next discussion item. I wanted to get the board's feeling about whether moving forward to the workshop on the 14th and the meeting on the August 8th, there's a feeling we could move back to a socially distanced in person board meeting, or whether we should continue to do the remote meetings. So rather than just make a decision on that, I thought we should, you know, we should have that as at least get your feelings on that. Denise?
I know for me, remote has definitely been challenging. But I also appreciate, you know, the the concern that people may have as far as meeting in person. But certainly my preference is is if we could meet safely in person, I that would definitely be my preference.
I'll throw in, it's like I, 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 I do not like doing the remote things, but I'm also acutely aware, particularly Kenny is immunocompromised. So the question would be to me, could we do a hybrid meeting? Were we and that's what the town council did because I don't want to put people or apply social pressure to people who are at risk is to go to a meeting if they don't feel comfortable.
I would think that would be possible, but we could that would something we could look into. Sure. Yeah.
There are there are other boards out there that are doing the hybrid style. There are some meeting there and some meeting virtually. So and it's been, I mean, it's a challenge, but it's been done. And they've made it work. So.
Okay.
I, for one, would prefer to be in person, given a choice, but I'll go with whatever the majority of the board decides.
I would, I think we would probably all prefer to be in person. But I agree with that what Al said, given the risks, if there's a practical way to do the hybrid version, I think that makes the most sense at this point.
Yeah. Michael, do you have thoughts on this?
I'm I'm really satisfied with with either approach. I'm comfortable with the technology that we've been using. I think that in person, the conversation tends to flow more smoothly. And if we do a hybrid approach, we need to make sure that that is smooth enough, that it is that whoever is not in person is not impaired in the conversation.
Okay, great. Okay.
I would just say, it's a difficult issue, I think. I think all of us draw lines in different places where we feel safe. You know, we're seeing that locally, we're seeing that all over the country. You know, for me, these kind of meetings are working, and probably it's the only kind of meeting, you know, or I guess the hybrid that could work for me, where, as Al referred, I just feel very vulnerable. And whether that makes me more paranoid than I should be, Tracy and I are really locked down crazy. And just put that out there.
Sure, it makes perfect sense.
Yeah, so Tom, it's it would not be a challenge for us to set up a meeting in a hybrid fashion. We know we just put out the full circle so that we can socially distance at the board meeting and wear masks. And, you know, if we're going to run a hybrid, we still would read the introduction that you read and allow for public comment remotely until we're ready to go to a, you know, a complete rollback to tradition. And I think that would work. And if the board is comfortable with that, I think that's what we should attempt to do. And we'll see how smoothly it goes. But I have every confidence that Alex can Alexander can make it work for us.
You know, the other suggestion I'll make to is that Craig Stevens has run some planning board hybrid meetings. So maybe have Alexander network with Craig and talk what worked and what didn't work in the hybrids.
Now, who does he run from? Who's Craig Stevens? I'm sorry.
Oh, he's a he does DK. He's the town video.
Okay, 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 got it, got it. Okay. Okay, that's good. Thank you. So we have a question about the fall calendar related to voting. So.
So I planted this seed with the board previously. And since I'm not the expert and Chris Regan is, I invited him this evening to talk about his thoughts in relation to the September primary. The board had effectively taken care of the general election when we built the calendar. But there is some question there as well in terms of being for for Jim Rozicky's crew to be able to to clean the building thoroughly, because we do expect record turnout in November. But really, the issue that Chris put forward for us to consider is also September. So Chris, if you're there, can you pick it up from here?
Sir, I think I'm on.
You are on. You're on. Your screen is your screen is a little bit. We only see half of your head.
Oh, I can see all of it. Which half? Which half?
It's a good half. It's the top half.
Is this any better?
It's a little better, yeah.
Okay. That's odd, because I I'm getting full face on my video view. I apologize. And actually, we just had a the town election officials just had a meeting Tuesday morning to go over things. And I think the first thing I can tell you is, it is still in flux. Where nobody's quite sure what to expect and what to do. I went back and looked at the numbers again. Up through 2016, it looked like, you know, it wasn't a huge number of voters, about 1,200 average, which usually a lot more on the election presidential years and less on the off years, up until 2018, when we doubled the average and came up to almost 2,400. And typically, before, we've been doing it all in the multipurpose room. This year. Uh, this year, um, uh, because of the social distancing concerns, especially we are, have asked to do it in the gym instead. Um, and we think we can pretty well local, uh, or handle everything there and have talked about, um, being able to not do the rest of the voting, uh, the rest of the building, I should say. Um, the one other concern, though, is that we're starting to get some concerns about maybe needing to deal with people outside who do not, for some reason, do not ask for absentee ballots. And that is going to be our strong, strong push. Excuse me, and the, uh, governor is going to be, and the state, uh, Secretary of State's office is also going to be pushing strongly. But, uh, there are a number of people who don't get the message, some people who feel it's important, uh, to show up anyway to vote, even if they have the opportunity to vote absentee. So, um, there is still gonna be at least some group of people we think are gonna show up. And so, we're talking about how, if we need to try to accommodate people who may just only be in bars. And obviously, there's the, uh, question, and unfortunately, the timing of this is the primary is on, uh, September 8th, which is the Tuesday right after Labor Day, which also means that we're, uh, probably talking about setting up on, uh, the prior Friday. And, uh, I think, uh, that, that'll work out, because I believe that's a day that you don't have school. Um, so, um, you know, that's the facts, and, and thing I can give you. Uh, I don't know how you're planning on doing, um, handling school that day. You know, candidly, given everything going on, it might be easier. Uh, if you didn't, we didn't have a student population around that day, but that's your call, obviously. And, uh, we're not here to tell you, uh, or I'm not here to tell you one way or another what you ought to be doing. I guess the also question is, can you guys keep cleaning? You feel appropriate done overnight into, into Wednesday, but I just flag that for you to consider and decide how you wanna handle that part of it also. So, um, I hope that at least sets, you know, some of the stage, and I presume you have thoughts and questions yourself.
So you're, you're quite, so there's, just to summarize, there's no school on Friday, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so, you're, you're asking if there could possibly, you know, given the complexity, if there could be no school on Tuesday, and then we would have to assess whether that would also mean no school on Wednesday, because it would take time to clean, to clean up and be, so is that kind of the question?
It is, Tom, and then, you know, the, the, one piece is silver lining through this crisis is our ability to do remote, um, learning. So if we know that we can't be in school physically, and we're just talking about the high school, um, the teachers can provide assignments now, um, that the, the students could work on if, if you decide that that day doesn't make sense for the kids to be there. Um, I was gonna ask Chris, when you had the high turnout of 2,500, um, Chris, in the primary, um, what did that look like? Were you able to contain all of that in the, uh, NPR? Or did it trail out into the hallways and down towards the gym?
We, oh, well, talking to, uh, Dan Chump and the other supervisors, they typically get, you know, a handful of people who are same-day registrants. Um, that time, there were 400 same-day registrants. I think at most, they sort of trailed out the front door. We were pretty well able to contain them in the NPR. Uh, and I, I guess I also ought to add, some of the factors, I think, that led to the unusually high turnout, uh, in 2018 seemed to be present again, which is, again, a lot of interest in the, uh, election itself, uh, just in, in voting in general. And also, there is a mini-primary, or a primary amongst even the, uh, local state legislators and the Democratic ticket. And, uh, uh, again, this year, there will be six running for five positions. And, uh, one of the, uh, members who was actually successful last time had some fairly, you know, a younger person that had some good contacts on campus, drew a lot of people from campus down, uh, to register same-day vote in the election. Uh, so, and that's also true, and what I understand is that he is again contemplating going back on campus, trying to, uh, see if he can get some, uh, of the, uh, students who, uh, wish to claim Durham domicile, uh, to come down and vote again. So, we could have the same thing again. Uh, we're gonna make a, every effort possible to do it, um, uh, by absentee registration, absentee voting, which I strongly encourage everyone to consider. But, uh, this, that's the population that's probably the least likely to respond to requests for doing it. It's much more of a, uh, you know, somebody grabs them and says, "Let's go", and they're more likely to do, respond that way with a, a long thought out. Um, "Yeah, I'm gonna do this in two months." Um, so, uh, I'm sorry, that was a long-winded answer, and I hope I hit most of the points, uh, but yes, we were able to contain it. Oh, the other, uh, point is, obviously, social distancing was not a, uh, concern at that point. And obviously, um, that is going to be a major concern for, for these elections.
That, that was the point I was, that was the point I was gonna raise, is the election won't be like two years ago, because with the increased space required by social distancing, um, it's really gonna take up a lot more room, even with the same amount of people, um, that we had there. So I think we need to look at that.
I would add to that, you know, and I was talking to Suzanne about this, you know, that the multipurpose room is likely to be a auxiliary classroom at that point. And so, you know, normally, we can rearrange things, but I do think we need to take into consideration the, um, situation we're facing in opening school, and that space will, will become an invaluable space for the high school. So.
Denise?
Point of consideration.
Um, I know this is not Durham, but, um, so for, um, Lee and, Lee and Madbury are not using, like, uh, Massway School is not being used at all?
Madbury never uses the, um, O'Haremit School. Lee is going to use the Massway School on, in the November election. I had Wendy Hall, and they had no plans to use it in the primary. So we can keep school open if you decide K through eight, um, and just have the high school down.
I like what you said, Dr. Morse, of having, for the high school, that could be a remote day. And, you know, things will be the same for middle school and elementary school, and just gonna go for that kind of model, and I think that's the safest to do.
Kenny, would you make a motion for that?
Sure, so I would, um, like to, um, I guess it's amend the calendar with the change that on the election day for the primary, the high school, um, designate that as a day of remote learning, while we keep things the same at the elementary and middle school levels.
It's moved by Kenny, is there a second? Denise? Or, or Al? Second by Al? So moved by Kenny, second by Al? So the further discussions, questions? So that would leave open, that would leave open what would happen on Wednesday, but, you know, yeah, Denise?
Yeah, that was, I was just gonna bring up that point, um, is whether we wanna have a separate discussion about Wednesday, or?
I mean, I think that, you know, in an ideal setting, Jim would love that day, but, um, I'm, I'd be more concerned about him having extra time to clean the high school after the November election. You know, we all have a memory about what happens in the general election. When it's a presidential election, there is no containment. Um, you know, Chris has got people very organized, but they're going down the length of, of both hallways in order to be able to get in to vote. So it is pretty dramatic, and, you know, we can visit that later. We don't necessarily have to visit that tonight, but I do think that Jim will need an extra day in November to thoroughly clean the building. And I think that's just an effort to, you know, uh, deal with the coronavirus and, and so forth. So, um, I think his night crew can, can do decent work. If Chris is successful in containing it in the multipurpose room, it's really just that room that will need the extra cleaning.
Actually, for the, um, for the, uh, the primary, we were, uh, expecting that we'd be able to use the gymnasium and then just localize to the corridors, immediately surround the gymnasium, so we're not even going down, uh, that far into, towards the center of the school buildings.
Right, is that what you talked to Suzanne about, um, Chris?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that question.
My request for that, and which have been approved, I think, have been for the gym.
So, Jim, we won't need the, they won't be using the gym for anything else that weekend? Because if they're gonna set up on Friday, it'll not be usable Saturday and Sunday.
Right, we don't normally, yeah, we wouldn't let it be used that weekend, because it'd be set up for the elections. Once, uh, Chris has set it up, it can't be disturbed.
Right.
And, and plus, there'll be a covering down on the floor. Actually, we, we did meet, uh, earlier with Suzanne, and I believe the A.D. has, uh, already signed it off and, and looked at moving what games were necessary to be moved.
Good, good.
So, uh, Chris, just in your memo, it did say Jim and NPR, so you're just saying you need the gym?
Yeah, uh, originally, we were, um, not quite sure how to do. I think we can contain it in the gym at this point.
Okay, thank you.
So it sounds like you really don't have a sense of exactly how you'd lay this out yet.
Um, can you tell me, uh, what the students are gonna be doing up on campus and the state of coronavirus as of September?
Well, you, you, you're asking for, you're asking for a significant disruption to the school. So I would expect that you have an idea of how you're gonna lay out the space. We're talking about whether you're gonna use the gym and the multipurpose room, or one or the other, and I, I'm asking if you have a sense of what that layout's gonna be? And I'm surprised you don't.
I, I have a sense that it can be contained in the gym and the corridors are, uh, immediately surrounding the gymnasium.
But you don't know how you're gonna lay it out. Okay.
You mean, how, how we're actually going to, uh?
I don't really know how much space you need. And I'm, I'm a little disappointed that we're, uh, taking this kind of disruption to the school and the space without having really a, a plan in place for how you're gonna use that space.
It's going to be basically the same way we used it for every other election. If you wanna know precisely where the tables or the booths are going to be, uh, I'm not sure I can do that, but I don't always know that for every other election, so.
Are you ready to vote on Kenny's motion? Okay. Uh, Denise Day?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Tom, would you just read the motion back? Just, it's been a while since Kenny made the motion, I wanna make sure I'm clear.
So I don't know, is Wendy on here, or is, or do you wanna repeat?
Yes.
The essence of the, the motion was, um, an amendment to the calendar, a change to the calendar, such that on that Tuesday election day, um, our high school will use remote learning, while elementary and middle school will stay with their, um, kind of what they are scheduled to do without any change.
Okay, and I just wanted to make sure we were not, that when, the idea of Wednesday, uh, also being included was not in the motion, is that correct?
Dr. Morse, you don't need the Wednesday, yeah. So it's just that Tuesday.
All right, thanks.
Okay, so are we ready to go? So Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Holland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Francis Naras?
Yes.
Kenny Rotner?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
No.
Tom Newkirk, yes, six to one, uh, that change in, uh, scheduling is approved.
Thank you, Chris.
Much, thanks, Chris.
Is there anything more you need from me tonight?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck with the election.
Well, we'll see what we can do. Thank you.
You'll do a great job, thank you. Um, so Dr. Morse, uh, do you wanna talk about phase one?
Yes, uh, so thank you, guys, for, um, you know, the time to, to talk through this. So what this document really is saying is, you know, what are the foundational decisions we're making in order to build a specific strategy for the fall? And, you know, just to bring us to the place where, uh, we are, obviously, when we were set in an emergency session by the governor in March, the entire system had three days to, um, plan. And three days to plan was far less than we needed. Uh, from the moment that we stopped school, the very immediate week afterwards, we spent, uh, two days with, um, about 70 staff, uh, having a workshop around, uh, you know, what, what we thought went well and what we thought we could improve. Uh, just before that, we did a community survey, and the community survey was, um, amazing in its response. Uh, you know, as I, I think I said, it was about 40% of our parents and guardians responded, about 45% of our, um, let's see, parents and guardians, 45% of the, um, uh, students. Thank you, thank, my brain, my brain is just trying to kick in. And about 90% of our teachers and support staff. So we had some pretty rich documentation to, uh, begin thinking about how we would do remote learning, should we be forced into it, uh, in the fall. Uh, from the community survey, you know, we were able to really get quality feedback. And, um, you know, the students were incredibly engaging in, in their conversations, and the, the staff was pretty direct. The amazing thing about all of the survey work is how in concert the, um, opinions of the various constituencies were. Um, then we took time, uh, just to write down every doggone question we could think of, and we had hundreds of questions. And, um, that, that questioning strategy led us to begin to formulate a, um, a, a grid that addressed the issue of, uh, what we would do if we come back traditionally, and what we would do if we were forced to stay in remote learning, and what we would do if, um, we were a hybrid. So that kind of gives us the background of, you know, what, what's is on in the district since we, um, ended the school year. Uh, and I would be remiss in not giving credit to the dozens upon dozens of, of, uh, faculty, administrators, and community input that we've been getting pretty regularly, and you can see that just on the first page. Um, the reason this page is so important is, it really formed the basis of our conversations. So we had an S.A.U. or district team. We had a team for, uh, Massway from O'Haremit, a team for the middle school and high school. And part of that is, uh, really based on the feedback we got, because, you know, one of the more compelling, uh, comments that was made is, you know, "We understand that you had three days to do this, and you created a plan where one size fits all, but one size really didn't fit all. Our needs at the elementary were significantly different than our needs at the high school", and so forth. Um, the next slide is about, you know, the confidence we, we have in, in our community. And when I talk about our community, um, I'm talking about the greater community. Uh, we ended up with, um, really terrific, terrific feedback. And, and more importantly, um, we also got guidance in terms of, uh, resources. So, I have to say that, um, we were inundated, uh, with, um, with resources. Todd, the slide is not, my screen is white. I don't see the confidence in the community slide.
Is any, is anybody else seeing it? Because it's on my screen.
I'm seeing it.
I see it, I see it.
All right, good enough. Um, so, you know, I've had great feedback and, and constant contact from community members like, um, Rebecca Frup, who, um, was part of the public comment section tonight. And I had been aware of the American Academy of Pediatrics report. Um, she sent me an email and just brought it right to the forefront for me, and I went back and reread it. And I compared it to other documentation that we were getting from various states and various, um, organizations. And they're all, you know, credible organizations, but they really didn't have a handle on schools. And the AAP had a handle on schools. Uh, they really were very, um... were very directive in terms of their guidance, as opposed to some of the willy nilly and vague recommendations we were getting from other organizations. And I would say the Harvard School of Public Health was right behind them. And so when we created this PowerPoint, we created those connections to be hot buttons, so that you or any of the community can see the work that we've been using to guide our decision making. So everything there is work that has influenced the direction we're going. So tonight, as I said, is really a foundation document. This is really to start the the serious work. And so we spent days and days and hours and hours just getting to this place. And it's an important time to spend so we knew what we were trying to achieve. So we'll workshop this next week, and we also will start throwing out some of our ideas for the opening of school at that workshop. Then we'll spend about a couple more weeks refining and refining, so that when we get back to you, we'll have a very specific plan in August. And it might be, Tom, and the school board, that we may ask for an additional workshop before we get to August 5, to be able to get collective feedback from the board and give you a sense of where we're at. And so when we hit August 5, we really can make a decision. And why do I want to make a decision on August 5? Because our parents need to know as soon as possible, you know, what it is, what is the direction we're going? When we look at our district's resilience, you know, it brings us back to the survey and how amazing our community was in in filling out the survey. Two revs took our survey, and there's a hot button on remote learning and the resilience of the community, where they broke our responses down in percentage terms. And I thought that was a really a great way of looking at the community data. Todd printed out all the comments for me, just to give you a sense of it. And in order to get all the comments on to a page, he he really went to six-point sized letters, thinking I was 25, evidently. I needed a magnifying glass to read them. But the reason he did that was, we literally had about six inches worth of paper with with community comments. So people really took that survey seriously. And this is where we get both from the AAP and from our own community, that our direction has to be age appropriate, and that we need more synchronous synchronized learning, especially at the elementary and middle school level. We need to form more social connections between our students and teachers. That came from our students, high school students. Suzanne invited me into a conversation with high school students, and they uniformly said that anytime that they were making a connection with their teacher, they felt motivated and valued. Our parents were left out of the school schoolology picture. That has to be corrected in in the opening of school. And, you know, there has to be a consistent expectation throughout the system. So, you know, the way I would characterize it is, we had 200 amazing educators who were incredibly skilled, but they were really developing 200 different approaches. And, you know, that came became incredibly confusing for some for some of some of the parents. And it the accountability issue really wasn't existent in that 13 weeks. So by building a consistent approach, we can have an expectation, for example, that children will meet with their teachers X number of times a week. We can have an expectation that there's going to be both synchronous and asynchronous activities. We can have an expectation that social emotional learning and mental health activities are part of the curriculum. And we can have an expectation that our electives around music, art, and phys ed are treated as important parts of a curriculum and not afterthoughts. So that's just some of the expectations we can have. And the next slide is really captures the planning process, our reentry planning process. So, you know, if you follow the green boxes all the way across, it's hallelujah time. We can open the school the way that we have always traditionally opened school, though we want to spend probably the first three weeks of school just reacclimating children to school and doing a lot of activities around social emotional learning and and mental health. If you think about these 13 weeks and some of the comments we we heard from parents tonight, that 13 weeks was pretty traumatic for all of our students, K through 12. It was very traumatic on our teaching and support staff, and it was equally traumatic on parents who had to manage the learning process with with their children. And so if we just turn the switch on on the first day of school and say, okay, open your books to page 83, and we're going to do the odd-numbered math problems, we're doing a disservice to our to our students. So the green boxes, the New Hampshire, New Hampshire authorities, meaning the governor, has lifted the school closure ban. And the school board itself has has decided that we're going to open the school, and that individual families are comfortable in sending their children to school. And we end up with the ability to open the schools. But there's also options here to be thinking about what if we hit, say, we get to August 5, and we feel comfortable that all the green boxes are lit and we're ready to go. But then the virus reignites in a way that the governor makes another executive decision to shut down schools. Or we get into a school setting, we open school, and then come Halloween or Thanksgiving, the virus reemerges and a second gets a second wind, and we're back to remote learning. So all the planning we're doing during this time period is not only to think about how do we start school in a traditional format, but also, is there a hybrid or blended model that we should be considering? And and then ultimately, if the rug is pulled out from under us because of the virus, what would remote learning look like? Because it can't look like what it did during the 13-week period we're in crisis. So we're really planning for three different contingencies. So I just want to turn it over to Todd for a bit, and then we'll come back to a couple slides, and I'd be glad to answer the board questions. So Todd?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Morris. Yeah. So I I spoke about this at the June 17 meeting, based on the work we had done with two revolutions and and the the vast number of our staff that have been involved in this. But this slide kind of represents sort of how the structure of our thinking has has gone. It's based on the return to school roadmap that that I had mentioned to you at that time. It's this document that the Start Task Force has used. It's also been promoted by the Hampshire School Administrators Association as a a good guide to guide you in the planning. So as we initiated it, we we developed a governance committee, which you saw on the first slide, was made up of district office personnel. The intent of that was to make sure that as we made decisions at the various buildings and departments, the decisions were consistent, and to try to make sure that we, as we started talking about policies that needed to be put in place, that we made sure those were there. We very actively looked at the issue of wellness and and social emotional learning. One of the the key criticisms that had come out during our 13-week remote learning experience was that the wellness, the social emotional side of the equation was not as well cared for. Kids, a lot of times, talked about the desire to have more direct contact with their teachers, more more contact with their classmates and so forth. So we've had a lot of conversation around that. We have spent a lot of time looking at instruction and assessment. One of the things that we were very good at this past spring was making the technical shift to, you know, use schoology as a platform to share content with our students and to kind of keep the learning process going. But what we didn't do was spend enough time talking about the pedagogy and, you know, the what what needs to happen in order to have instruction be effective in the remote setting, because what works in a face-to-face environment may not work in a remote environment. And so it's not just as simple as switching it over to online. It's you. You have to put some thought into how you're structuring the learning and what you're asking of kids. So we've spent a lot of time on that. And we will continue. That's going to be a big focus of professional development over the coming months. Technology, obviously, has been a big thing. Clearly, we've spent a lot of time looking at the technology that we have available and and looking at some of the the strengths and weaknesses. I would say our investment over the recent years in technology, and certainly for this upcoming year, we will have one-to-one technology from grades five through 12, makes the remote platform much easier for us to to implement, because we have a lot more consistency. So that's very good. But obviously, there are other other considerations we have to take into account, such as if we are in a remote environment, how much screen time is reasonable to expect at at various age levels and and so forth. So technology's been a big component. School health, we have had all of our building nurses engaged in this process, and they have been amazing at really following a lot of the guidance coming out of the New Hampshire Department of D H H S, and really keeping us in the loop as as the recommendations have changed. And as as anybody who's following the situation knows, it's a very fluid situation. So the recommendations that they made in, you know, April and May are not necessarily the same recommendations that are being made now, and trying to make sure we stay on top of that. And then clearly, the the stiff, the the final category is operations. And one of the things we are very much learning as we go through this is, you can have all of the best educational philosophy and ideas in mind and what you want to do, but it still could come down to, can you can you get the kids to school on the buses? Can you manage them in in recess? Can you? Those are going to be the situations that are some of the the struggles. So we've had Jim Rozicki and Doris Demers and Lisa Huppie very actively involved in thinking about this, and really trying to make sure we're putting our best thinking in all aspects, so that when we're ready to determine what's the scenario we're going to embrace to start school, we've thought it through in all in all aspects. One of the things that we really have talked a lot about is, even when we're, and I and I say even when, because we will be in a normal situation at some point, whether it's the first day of school or not, we will be back to normal. But even normal is not going to be the same. And so even if on day one of school, 100% of the kids are in our schools, there are a lot of things we still have to do in order to be ready to manage them safely and effectively. And this this list is not in a priority order, but it's a a number of the things that we have been looking at as we talk about what do we need to keep in mind as we prepare ourselves for the fall. One of the things we've talked a lot about is, should the district require some form of health screening for students, faculty, and staff on a regular basis as they enter the building? We have been using a a protocol that's basically, if you walk into any of our school buildings right now, you'll see a a sign on the door, and there are six questions that are asked of everybody there. And basically, what they're questions that are asking, things like, have you been in contact with anybody that had COVID? Have you experienced any of the symptoms? Have you been anywhere that might have been exposed to it? If you answer yes to any of the questions, we ask you not to enter the building. So that's that's basically been how we've been managing it. But clearly, for us to bring all the kids back, we need to come up with a system that works well. In Massachusetts, you may have heard, they are have determined that the best way to do it is to put that responsibility on families, and really, really educate families and encourage them to do sort of a wellness health check every morning before they send their kids to school. And we do the same thing for faculty. Regardless, we're going to have some kind of a process that we'll need to have in place to deal with that. Lunch is going to have to be different. We know, you know, that in the days of having, you know, I I envision the high school cafeteria with 400 kids in a in a lunch, that environment is simply not going to be a a healthy and safe situation. So we're looking at different ways to manage lunch. I know Doris has been actively involved in looking at, you know, how can we do grab-and-go lunches so we don't have to have this long lunch line where kids are congregating? A lot of this stuff is about trying to create structures that don't force kids to congregate in large numbers for extended periods of time for for in in a way that might might be hazardous. Scheduling of drop off and pickup, that's something we've talked an awful lot about. Clearly, you know, if you I'm thinking about the middle school, and if you if anybody's been to the middle school in the morning, you see the front door, typically, there's 100, 100 or so kids standing on the curb waiting to get in. And if you go to the back, there's a few hundred more standing on the back curb waiting to get in as they've been dropped off the bus. And if you go inside, you'll find hundreds of kids standing in the cafeteria in the library, waiting for that first bell to ring and start school. Clearly, those settings are not going to be doable. So we're looking at ways to have sort of staggered gradual processes in place, so that when kids arrive, they go directly to a location that they're responsible to get to. And there isn't a significant amount of time where they're spent gathering in those large, large groups. You know, in terms of looking at it, going back to the health protocols, we clearly are going to have to be more strict in terms of the standards by which we accept students that are experiencing symptoms and staff that are experiencing symptoms being in the building. And certainly, we we did experience it a few times over the course of the spring with with faculty or staff that had symptoms, and being being needed to be quarantined for various periods of time. That is, that's a reality in in the COVID world, and we'll have to have processes in place for that. We've mentioned Jim Rozicki and his staff. They have done amazing things throughout this to make sure that the the cleaning processes that we have in place are really effective. And they have continued to be very aggressive at that. We also, with students in the building, will have to really factor in making sure, particularly with the younger kids, that we factor in time on a regular basis for hand washing and that kind of thing. Parents coming and going into the building, we'll have to ask people to only be allowed in the building by appointment. But these are all things, you know, these are things that we have to keep in mind, because we can't just have that flow of people coming and going. Clearly, we'll have medical people on site all the time. We may have a an issue with contact tracing in the event that an outbreak were to happen, and we have to figure out a system for that. I know Massachusetts has used a system where where they are asking families to do that. Certainly, the the CDC has in the Department of Health and Human Services has been doing a lot of that in New Hampshire. But certainly, if it was a substantial number, we might have to come up with a a system of our own. We will likely be asking all fam, all kids to wear masks and all staff to wear masks throughout the day. It's 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 the healthy thing to do, but it does, it is a change in the way we have done things. We have talked a lot about athletics. In fact, Dr. Morris shared an article earlier this evening. The Ivy League has just announced that they're canceling fall sports, so they're not going to have them this fall. So clearly, there is going to be some ongoing dialogue about what sports look like. Currently, the N H I A is talking about having sports as normal, but they're putting it on local school systems at this point to determine if we feel comfortable participating. So obviously, that's at some point, we'll have to have that conversation. Outside groups coming and going in the building will need to be controlled, and and we'll have to have strict protocols for that as well. We have some experience with that, with some of the outside groups that are now using our athletic fields, and we've asked them to to engage in in a number of the same protocols that we use. And then the big one, which is something we'll talk about at the middle school, we are going to be encouraging teachers and to use outside space as often as we possibly can. One of the drawbacks to the middle school construction project is, there really is no outside space at the middle school. So we're going to have to get creative on finding outside spaces they can use. Certainly, the high school will be a cooperative partner, but obviously, they'll be using their outside space as well. So that's some, that's something we will be working on. But all of these are things that we have been working through and will continue to work through as we we develop plans for people being on campus. Excuse me. One of the concepts which you've probably heard a lot in the news is the notion of cohorts. Historically, in Oyster River, when we talk about class groups, I mean, it's it's a kind of a traditional rite of passage, if you will. Kids get told, I have Ms. Schmidt. Okay, great. I'm in Ms. Schmidt's class next year. And they and there's there's that component. And certainly, we organize cohorts around educational needs and make sure they're balanced and heterogeneously grouped. But in in the 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 post-COVID world, cohorts also take on a meaning in terms of how we use as a public health sort of tool. So one of the things we will have to discuss as we get closer to making a decision is, how large of a cohort size are we comfortable having? You have probably heard lots of conversation about CDC and and certainly the the current CDC guidance, really adhering to that six-foot social distancing idea, really limits you to cohort sizes of, you know, in most classrooms of 10 to 12. And clearly, that's about half the size of most of the classes that we typically have. If that's the cohort size we want to have, then obviously, we have to do something with to to spread the kids out, whether it's some of the kids come some some of the time, and some of the kids comes other times. It really is all all plays into what we determine is our comfort level with with cohort size. Dr. Morris mentioned the American Academy of Pediatrics. One of the things that they are saying is, is long as you have, particularly for the younger kids, as long as you have kids wearing masks, you can reduce the social distancing to three feet. And certainly, that, if that's a guideline that we are comfortable following, we can obviously have more kids in the classroom if that's something that we feel we can manage. One of the things I would point out is not all the classrooms in our district are the same size. And so, you know, state's recommendation for a classroom is typically 900 square feet. And if all of our classrooms were 900 square feet, we could do, you know, 20 to 24 in a 900-square-foot classroom with three-foot social distancing. Unfortunately, not all of our classrooms are that adequate. In fact, I think 45%, we learned that the middle school are substandard. So, there's not enough space to have the full-size group if we adhere to that three-foot guideline. So, clearly, cohorts is something we'll have to talk about, and that will certainly be a subject of the workshop. This slide here is really not, I want to say what it's not, it's not a master schedule, but it's an attempt to give a sense of what the daily life would be at each level, depending on the model we're in. The green dots reflect if we're on campus. So, clearly, there are more elements to the day if you're on campus, because you could do a lot more things. The yellow dots reflect the things that we would put in a daily basis in a hybrid model. And then the blue dots would be if we were entirely remote, one of the core elements of the day. One of the things that came through loud and clear in the surveys and the student feedback was that in the remote setting, we needed to make sure to be much more synchronized, much more consistent in the way we scheduled and implemented things. Kids and adults wanted more direct contact between each other, to feel connected to the school, and also to feel like things were progressing. So, clearly, we're intending, even if in remote, we would have a much more synchronized master schedule, one way or the other. And then the last slide that I will talk about, clearly, when you talk about blended and remote learning, we talk about the various digital platforms that we're using. And so, these are the key ones that we are going to continue to support. Clearly, Power School is one that everybody's familiar with. It's been our student information system for going on 10 years now. Most families are familiar with it, because it's where they go to see their students' grades. And certainly, at the high school, it's where they go to get their schedules. So, that will continue to exist. Schoology was, is the learning management system that we adopted this past year. One of the things I do want to mention, Schoology was, we had a multi-year implementation plan for Schoology, and we actually consciously did not roll out the parent portal this past year, because we couldn't get it set up in time and have all the student accounts set up. So, please know that we absolutely intend to have all parents have a Schoology account in the fall, so that they will have the same access to the course content that their children do. And it will also be the tool that teachers are using to communicate with families. So, it will be a consistent platform. In the surveys, we heard loud and clear, at every level, they very much appreciated the consistency of the Schoology platform. I did a meeting with some high school students with Suzanne yesterday. And once again, they were touting the benefits of Schoology, and they really liked it. In fact, some of them liked it better than Google Classroom, which I think is great. Microsoft Teams is going to continue to be the tool we use for that face-to-face interaction. One of the hindrances of it was the number of screens. Obviously, you are all experiencing it, because you've had many school board meetings on it. But we are told that the newest model of it, which is supposed to be coming out soon, will have the capacity to have up to 49 faces on the screen. So, it'll become much more useful that way. As a side point, because some people have asked, why don't we use Zoom and so forth? Microsoft Teams, we selected it because it does, meets our standards of data privacy and protects us in that regard. So, Microsoft Teams, you may have heard in the news, you know, Zoom bombers and things like that, cutting into some classrooms. Microsoft Teams is just better at protecting us from that kind of thing. And so, we continue to use that. And then lastly, we have a number of digital platforms that we use across the district. One that is new, which is listed there, is called Freckle. And it's going to, it's a math and ELA program that will be available at the elementary level. What's teachers, we had a group of teachers pilot it last spring, and it's linked to STAR, which is our assessment model. And it will allow us, whether we're in person or virtually, to have more connection to where students are at academically and kind of connect the experience to that. So, it's a good tool. So, anyway, we have multiple other tools that we will be using, and they will be supported by the district based on the individual classroom and the grade level needs. Back to you, Jim.
Okay. So, as we conclude this presentation, I'm getting an echo now. I'm going to turn off my video, guys. All right. You weren't getting an echo. Maybe you should clean this up, because, oh, wait a second, it's gone away. All right. So, the whole point of this is that there is no one telling us that there's an absolutely right answer. That's why every school system in New Hampshire is doing this work independently, because each community has different needs and each school system has different needs. And, you know, over these months, we also have conflicting reports from medical professionals, you know, and we have conflicting reports from politicians. And so, you know, the basis of the work that we're doing is really, you know, founded in the surveys that we did with our community, where we got such great response. And relying now heavily on the American Pediatrics Academy, I did that wrong. Yeah, I think I did that right, that report. And so, I would encourage the entire board to take the time to read through that. It's a very readable document. It's very specific to how we can reopen schools at the elementary level, middle school level, and high school, as well as special education, as well as operations. And quite frankly, it's probably right now my working bible in terms of guidance. The issue here is flexibility. We need to be ready to bring the kids back to school. We also need to be ready to have a hybrid or blended model. And we have to be ready when the rug is pulled out from under us to go back to remote learning. It's just that when we go back to remote learning, it has to be an organized systemic approach, and so that we can predict how we're going to approach different issues, like the idea that we're teaching both synchronously and asynchronously. That just became a critically important aspect, and we can predict when that's happening across the system. Go ahead, Todd. And then, you know, we, as I was just saying, we need to be preparing for interruptions. Part of the work that we're doing is now starting to identify, are the unique and unforeseen costs to open school. And, you know, some of the obvious ones right off the top of our heads, you know, we can ask parents to supply masks, but we're going to also have to have masks on hand for the child who forgets them or who sullies the mask they're wearing. There's, you know, issues around furniture. You know, our furniture is absolutely designed for group settings. One of the most wonderful things about Oyster River teachers is when they set up their classroom, you'd be high-pressed to find a classroom that looks like 1950, where everybody's in a row neatly spaced. Our teachers are much more Socratic in their approach, more group-oriented, and you see kids in circles. You see them in small groups. Our teachers are very flexible in how they arrange their classrooms. So, you know, going back to the AAP report, and the idea that if a child is wearing a mask, we can cut the social distancing in half from six feet to three feet, makes a big difference in how we can arrange our classrooms. We may see teachers who have immune deficiencies or other issues that would prevent them from returning. I sent out a survey today to our staff to see who felt that they would have health issues that would prevent them from returning to school. We can use, the idea would be that we would use those staff, hopefully, to serve as some students who also have health issues that prevent them from coming to school. In other words, it would be a body of kids who we would maintain remote learning, because their health issues are so dramatic. And we would have a certain number of our faculty who also face the same issue. We could marry those and provide services for our health-impaired students. There are other issues in terms of cost that we may be coming back to on. And so, you know, we never, in building our budget last year, anticipated any unique costs associated with COVID-19. But there will be some. And in some cases, there will be grant money that will offset those costs. But if there isn't, we may have to come back to the board and say, you know, we need to use some of our emergency fund to make sure that we've covered this particular issue. So, we are preparing for interruptions. We're preparing to be flexible. We're preparing to have a systemic approach. So, just in terms of next steps, this PowerPoint will be the superintendent's newsletter on Friday. On Monday, we'll send out a new survey, asking parents where their comfort level is and sending their child back to school. We'll also be asking their comfort level in utilizing the bus. You know, the bus is a good example. If we follow the CDC recommendations of six feet apart, we could get nine kids and a bus driver on an 81-passenger bus. Clearly, that would not be a practical use of our buses, and we would be opening schools very late and closing them very late, because it would take so many extra runs to be able to accommodate that. So, you know, we have to apply common sense and then rely on the parents as to whether they feel that common sense is providing a safe environment for their child. You know, ultimately, in terms of Oyster River getting back to a place where we're comfortable with the work we're doing, pleased with the work we're doing, we have to inject the safety of our children and the safety of our staff into the equation. And so, that's what makes this work so difficult. You know, if I go back to Rebecca's comment again, she talked about the complexity of the work that, you know, she's doing, and recognizes the complexity of the work that we have to do. And so, this isn't the kind of thing that you could do in three days. This is the kind of thing, we are taking every available minute to develop the best possible plan for our community. And, you know, ultimately, if we're not in a stay-at-home order by the governor, since we're not in crisis, it will, the reason I want to bring this to the board for approval is that you are the governing agent for the school system. I am going to be making recommendations based on the work of dozens upon dozens of staff and the best recommendations that we can find from health professionals. But ultimately, it will fall on you to decide whether the recommendations we make are the recommendations that you can support, or whether you would prefer that the system go in a different direction. But I just want the board to know that we are working tirelessly on behalf of our students and our families, and recognize there are tremendous limitations to the work that we're doing and compromises that will need to be made. I go back to a quote that I constantly use now from David Goldsmith, which was, "We just have to be honest with everybody, Jim, that we can't do everything." And, you know, COVID-19 is certainly showing the limitations of our humanity in terms of being able to put together an Oyster River school system that we are proud of and is doing the work that we want them, want our educators to do for our children. So, that's where I will leave it, and I will just open it up to questions from the board. Tom, I'm going to leave my video off, because it seemed to work in terms of that echo. And I'll rely on you to pass questions to me or Todd related to the presentation.
Before we take questions, I didn't want this to pass. You said you might want a workshop before the August 8th meeting. Is that right? Another workshop?
Yeah, I'm thinking that, you know, one of the things that our parents are going to want desperately is for the board to be able to make a definitive decision at the beginning of August, so they can plan. And, you know, I'm thinking there's about three weeks between the workshop and the August meeting. And it might be good for the board to think about inserting one more workshop in, so you can hear the direction before we actually make the recommendations, give you a chance to guide us and question us before we get into, oh, are you ready to adopt this? Because I know the board likes to have as much information as possible, and this is such a big decision, that I'd just throw that out as a possibility.
The reason I ask is I think that we should probably set it as a, you know, not just wait and set it as a tentative hold. And then, so I'm thinking like, are you thinking like a two-week, maybe two weeks after the?
Well, so, we have our meeting on the 29th for finance. And so, the following week would actually be the 5th, which is the meeting. So, I would suggest maybe Thursday to 30th, if that would work for everyone.
Thursday, July 30th? Oh, okay.
I think that works.
Works for me.
Yeah, I just need to know now, because I actually have a training that I need to sign up for, which I actually was going to do tomorrow. So, as long as I know what date is set aside, I'll make sure I don't sign up for the webinar on that date.
Okay. I mean, Tom, it might be just ask each person if the 30th works, and if it does, we'll put it in as a definitive, and we can bring you guys up to date on where we are.
Okay. Should I have just Wendy circulate that and see if that works, or should we do it now?
I would do it right now. I mean, I think that, you know, if people can do it, I think they can look at their calendars right now and save us a mailing.
Works for me, Kenny.
Works for me.
Works for me.
I'm good. That'll work for me.
Professor Brian, Michael?
Are we talking about the normal evening time slot?
Yep, 7 to 9.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. So, July 30th, if we decide to have an extra workshop. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, Kenny. Thanks for waiting.
Oh, sure. Just a couple, I know we're going to talk more at length next week, but just a couple of things I thought important to say today. One, great appreciation for how much work is going into this. I can imagine the enormity of the task before you. And we know that the situation is, Todd, you mentioned, is so fluid, and we're trying to hit a moving target. And unfortunately, I think getting back to school has now become a political issue. And that's very unfortunate. And although I have the utmost respect for the American Academy of Pediatrics, and not to bust any bubble of yours, Jim, it's a very political organization. And what they're saying, I think, should not be looked at as being the only kind of viewpoint that's out there. But specific questions, I had one, it's great you're doing another survey. Would it make sense, if we're going to do comments again, to ask parents what we might need to do to make them feel more comfortable? And maybe we can get some good suggestions from them.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, Kenny. We were going to do one open-ended response, because we had an open-ended response for each question last time, and it really, people took advantage of it, and it was quite overwhelming. So, I think that would be a great, great ask of the parents.
The other thing, and I don't know if this is feasible, but with going indoors, really what's been mentioned as being the most crucial aspect is ventilation. And I don't know if we have the luxury to take a look at our buildings and areas within our buildings to see if there's anything that we can do better to clean the air, because that's really one of the big issues when we're bringing people together. And the last thing dealt more with faculty and staff is just making sure we're way ahead of the game in ordering any kind of protective equipment that we see is important for our bus drivers or cafeteria people, because there is a crunch still for that kind of equipment. And I think the sooner we make sure we have our orders in, the more assured we might have in place what we need to protect our vulnerable staff. So, I just wanted to throw those things out tonight.
Hey, Tom?
Yeah?
Yes. So, and again, just to reiterate what Kenny led off with, I think this is the level of thoughtfulness- the, the, the level of thoughtfulness detail and really trying to do everything we possibly can to prepare for every eventuality gives me a great deal of comfort. So thank you to everyone who was involved with that. As I listen to the public comments tonight and simultaneously reflected on numerous conversations I've had with constituents lately, parents in particular, I think there's an opportunity here, and I'm not sure if it's a message from the board, from the superintendent, from both, but it seems to me that folks are, in their messages to us, are trying to compel us to see the value of classroom learning over remote learning. I, and again, this is, you know, i- if we are, if there is consensus on this, I think they would find it very comforting to know that we really hold as the gold standard the classroom learning model. And, and in no way do we view remote learning as, you know, an adequate substitute or in any way superior to the classroom model. But at the same time, getting back to the numerous references to the American Academy of Pediatrics, who, you know, have, have really offered some excellent guidance on returning to school. You know, I'm just looking at a headline now on NPR. The president of the American Academy of Pediatrics did an interview today where she said states shouldn't force schools to reopen if virus is surging. So in other words, I think it's worth articulating that we don't, we, we are not sort of blindly committing to any one particular path, that we are doing our very best to be as, as well prepared as we possibly can for any eventuality come school resuming. So is there a way, I guess, what I'm proposing, that we could, we could craft a very concise statement that sort of in, in, in a very brief way says where our minds are, where our goals are, what we, what we hold as our sort of gold standard in terms of education, but also acknowledges the reality that much of this is out of our control and that we have to be prepared for things that, you know, we don't dictate. Does that make sense? In other words, saying to folks, listen, we're not looking at remote learning as a viable, or, or, or let me put it a different way, as a preferable option. We're looking at it because we may need it, right? We may need it if the virus happens to surge in our region, in our state. And in no way do we prioritize it as something that we think works well. It is a, it is a sort of stopgap measure.
If I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I, I do think, you know, one of the things that we need to distinguish is the forced remote learning that we experienced last year as a, a short-term emergency solution versus well-planned and well-done blended learning. Because I do think there's, setting aside the pandemic, there are teachers in our district that use technology very effectively, and there are lots of things that it can be done and kids can do independently i- in a remote setting. In fact, a lot of the talk is, you know, learning anytime, anywhere, that kind of concept. And so structurally, I think as a system, we want our teachers to be adept at using the various modes to deliver instruction, and we want them to be able to effectively do it in whatever setting we're in. I would 100% agree with you, Dan, that 100% remote versus 100% in-person. I mean, I, there's no question in my mind, the in-person learning is far, far, far preferable. But I don't want to lose the fact that there are very good and positive things that can be accomplished using technology if it is done well. And I think that's the, that's the messaging, we want to make sure that it's not, remote learning in and of itself is not inferior, it's just, it's not a permanent substitute for human interaction and all of the social learning that goes on in the course of a student's experience. So I just want to make that, that point.
Right, right. And I guess my concern is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Al.
Okay, all I was to say, actually, but I, thanks for including that grid, Todd, the work thing. I think that's really helpful. It may be overkill for parents to see it, but it really lets, everybody talks about, okay, open schools or don't open schools, but when you looked at that grid, it really gives you a clear idea, instructionally, how you're working through the online, you know, virtual versus, but it really gives a sense of what the process, I found it to be really helpful looking at it.
So Al, we'll be sending that filled out to you on Friday in preparation for Tuesday's workshop by the various groups. So you'll see it completely populated.
So if I could just add to my initial thoughts, my, my only concern is that if folks, the grid is pretty concise, and I, and I agree with Al, it's, it's very helpful. I'm concerned that when we send out information on our planning for the possibility of remote learning to whatever degree, that people will see that and interpret it as, you know, we feel safer with remote learning and therefore we're sort of committed to it. If there was, if there's a way that we could express to them, we're not just doing this because we think remote learning does a great job at replacing a traditional classroom model. We're doing this because we may need it, and we've learned a lot from what we've already experienced, and we know we can do, do it in many ways better, right? That if we can get that message out there, I think folks won't, there's a lot of anxiety. There's a lot of really genuine anxiety among, among families who have, you know, to varying degrees, experienced this remote learning and seen how it served their kids, and, and they dread it. And so I think it's worth conveying to folks that we're not looking at this just to, just because we think it's great. We're looking at this because we may have a genuine need for it.
I'll incorporate that thought right into my newsletter on Friday, because, Dan, I actually agree with everything you're saying. You know, the whole, the whole point of the grid was to be flexible and be prepared. But if everybody had their druthers, I think everybody would choose bringing the kids back, assuming that we could bring them back safely.
Denise?
So I just have a question in, in terms of just some, something to think about to prepare for our workshop next week. Have you thought about in terms of hybrid variations to the schedule in terms of, you know, days, weeks, just different things? And if you have, that would be helpful to maybe have, you know, a, a list of different options that maybe have been brought up. So I would just ask for that, if that's been part of the discussion.
It has been, Denise, and it will be part of the discussion on Tuesday.
Michael, you had your hand up?
Yeah, so when it comes to soliciting community input, especially in the form of a survey, the more information we can provide, whether it's about the scenarios that we want to consider for in-school learning or hybrid learning or remote learning, we need to provide some context for that. If we ask open-ended questions or ask questions similar to what we asked in May, every family is going to answer that based on their own experience, their own assumptions about what we mean. So if you ask me about remote learning, my only baseline is what I experienced from May 16th to the, to June 5th. And unless you give me some more details about what that's going to look like in the future, I can't really answer a question about whether I would send my kid to school or not. So that, that may be, I wonder if it's even maybe premature, depending on what kind of questions we're trying to ask in a survey.
We could hold the survey until after the workshop with the board. I mean, I just wanted to get one out in early July to see if any, 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 there's any different thoughts going on in the community. But I agree with you, Michael, if we could provide them with a context. In fact, Todd and I were talking about that in relation to transportation and being, you know, upfront with people that we can't run a bus system with nine kids on a bus, that our, you know, our fleet is capable of moving a lot more kids than that than we do on a daily basis under normal circumstances. So, you know, what's acceptable between a bus that, an 81 passenger bus that's full and, and a, a bizarre requirement of only nine kids on a bus? You know, where, what, what's a rational and reasonable and safe expectation for, you know, the number of kids on a bus? Context is important. I don't think people can answer the question without some context, so thank you, I appreciate that.
And, and, and that doesn't necessarily mean we need to wait to send it out, and it's, it is difficult to write questions in a way that provides that context concisely around issues that are as complex as this is.
Yeah, I think what I would do, Michael, is just in terms of, of this idea that you have, is to provide the context for how we would change remote learning and, and then ask the question, and how we would use the bus fleet and then ask the question, because that, that will help guide us in terms of whether we're on the right track or not.
Yeah, yeah. And then in terms of the, the grid that we'll be looking at on next Tuesday, I really do appreciate, there's, there's something like, I don't know, I didn't count them, but 100-ish rows in that, I, you know, categories for consideration across the different options. So that's, I really appreciate the thoroughness there. A couple of things that I would like to see us, maybe it's considered already because I haven't seen the filled out grid, but some things I thought might be missing, the encore subject areas are all lumped together in one line, and they're each going to have their own considerations and probably each, different considerations at different school levels. So I hope that's a very rich line when we see that one, or, or else broken out into additional lines. And I also didn't see anything about the preschool program, about how PEP might be considered differently or, or the same as other, other programs in there. So that might be an area, make sure that you have included as well. And, and then in terms of the columns, I think one important aspect is going to be, how would we transition from one option to another? If we have the eventual that we start with, say, a hybrid model or a traditional model, and then things get worse and we decide we need to go to a more remote model, how do we do that effectively and quickly? And have we thought that through? So that may be, you know, an additional column that needs to be added in the future. And then my, my final comment is more of a general thing. When you're trying to control a process or a situation, you don't just test when you suspect something's bad. You test a sample all the time. You take continuous sampling, you take a sampling plan. Is there going to be any sort of ability of the district or with support of the state to do some level of ongoing monitoring, probably of staff and faculty, of, you know, testing for presence of virus, even in people with healthy, that, that don't exhibit symptoms, because we know that is a major source of community transmission?
Yeah, I think that's an interesting question, Michael. I know that when I, I've talked to our nurses, the, the idea of, you know, temp, one of the concepts that was out there was temperature, temperature tech, testing students and staff every, every day. Well, you know, you have one school nurse per building, and it really becomes impractical. But we haven't had the conversation about the possibility of doing random assessments, and so I'll, I'll raise that with them.
Okay, so we'll have the workshop on the 14th, is that right?
Yes.
Be able to pursue these questions in more depth. So is okay if we move on?
Can I ask, what time is, this is just, what time is the workshop? Is that 7?
7, right. Yeah, 7 on the 14th, that's a two, it's.
And it's, where is it going to be? Is it going to be in the library?
Yes, and it will be streamed and recorded, so, because I, Tom and I talked about this earlier today, the topic is so important to the community. Going back to Dan's comment about anxiety that's in the community, I think the community would be appreciative of being able to hear the conversation the board is having with administration and get a sense of, you know, the, what we've been talking about, you know, you guys asked about possible examples, I think it was Denise, you know, we can talk about that. I think the community would really appreciate being able to listen in on, on the workshop.
Do we have the invite to join remotely yet, do you know?
Not for the workshop, Kenny. We wouldn't, we wouldn't invite comment for a workshop. This is really about the board picking the administrators.
No, but the invite for us on the board to join remotely, is that, I don't know, remember seeing that?
We didn't go, we didn't send it out yet, Ken, because we were going to have the conversation tonight about in or out, and now we know that we'll do a hybrid. So we'll get a, we'll get an invitation out to the entire board and who, you know, for you in particular, I, I know you'll do remote, which makes perfectly good sense. There may be other board members who'll do remote if it's more convenient for them, but we'll be going to, we're going to set up the library for, for the others.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, just to move down to the other actions, I would like to move to a point to the anti-racism committee. Kenny Rotner and Denise Day, I've spoken to both of them, they've been willing to, to do this, I think they'd be excellent members of the committee. So I'd like to make that motion. Could I have a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Michael. Any discussion? So if we can go to, let's see, roll call, Denise Day? Denise Day? Are you, are you?
Sorry, I was muted, yes.
Al Howland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Francis Naras?
Yes.
Kenny Rotner?
I'll abstain just for nonpartially.
Sure. Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes. So we have those two appointed, they'll be excellent members of that committee. I don't think we need a vote on future meetings, it seems like there's a consensus that we'll do a hybrid model for, is that all right? We've already done the revision of the calendar. We need a motion to accept the resignation of Aaron Ward as the math teacher. Sad, sad to see him go, but could we have a motion to accept that resignation? Kenny?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion, echo what you said, Tom. He's, Aaron's come before the board multiple times, and it's clear what an engaged educator he is and what an asset he's been to our district. We will miss him. And thank you, Aaron, for all of the work that you've done.
Mm-hmm. So moved by Kenny. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Denise. So, vote on that, Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Howland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Francis Naras?
Yes.
Kenny Rotner?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes. And then we have the appointment to replace him of Randy Margay, is that, am I pronouncing that right? Okay. Kevin, motion to affirm the hiring of Randy Margay?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Denise, second by?
I'll second it.
Second by Al. Discussion on that? Okay. Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Howland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Yes.
Francis Naras?
Yes.
Ken Rotner?
Yes.
Michael Williams?
Yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes. So that is, we've affirmed that hiring. I think that completes our work for the board. Are we missing anything? So our future meetings, we actually have one on the, the 14th. And then we talked about, we approved a, one for the, was it the 30th, Thursday, the 30th?
Yes.
Yeah, so we have two, two additional meetings that are on, are here.
Um, Tom?
Yes?
Ken, I'd just like to mention that Policy Committee is meeting tomorrow.
Okay. And you're going to take up, one of the issues is the agenda, you know, because we, because there was, we have, it was a suggestion to have like a unanimous consent.
Yes, that is on the agenda to discuss at Policy Committee tomorrow.
Okay, great. So unless somebody has something else, could we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'm sorry, who said that?
Me.
Oh, Al, of course. Moved by Al, is her second. Michael, okay, Denise Day?
Yes.
Al Howland?
Yes.
Dan Klein?
Oh, yes.
Francis Naras?
Yes.
Ken Rotner?
Yes.
Michael Williams? Yes. Tom Newkirk, yes, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.